We'll call it order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for November the 21st. The City Council should have the meetings from the November 7th Committee of the Whole. Are there any additions, correction to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
There's a move.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are carried forth. Questions on tonight's agenda for the City Manager? Anyone have questions? Ms. Crouch, anything for us?
We do not have anything at this time.
Okay. Is there a move to adjourn?
No.
All right. We are adjourned to the Committee of the Whole and we'll get started with the regular meeting right at 6:00. We'll call it order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for November the 21st, 2023. Certainly welcome to everybody that has joined us here in the council chambers tonight, those that are joining us on WANI as well as watching through our streaming services. We're glad to have you tonight. Lindsey with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
Obleins.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We had no actions during our Committee of the Whole, so I do have a number of mayor's announcements I'd like to make. I want to say congratulations to our student body and the leaders of the Beat Bama Food Drive. Auburn has won the Beat Bama Food Drive, actually doubling the amount of food that was raised here in Auburn and raised by our group of students with their competitors in Tuscaloosa. So we have started the week off right, but I want to thank them for serving our community so well and caring about our community and working hard. That's an impressive group of young people and congratulations for them and thank you for what they've done, particularly at this time of year where it's so, so needed. I want to just thank the, the, the people who are involved in the Farm City Breakfast that I attended last week and just remindful of, that we do have farmers in Lee County. We get so focused in our fast pace of life here in Auburn and what goes on in and around our university and our city that we forget that there are people making a living farming in Lee County and I appreciate their efforts. Also want to thank all the organizers in Lee County Ministerial Association for the Community Thanksgiving Service last Sunday night at Greater Peace Church in Opelika. It was a beautiful service. Multiple nationalities, multiple denominations, multiple communities came together to give thanks for all of our blessings and it was a great time. This coming Sunday is the Community Tree Lighting at Sanford Park. Yes, this is a university event, but I will be participating and it is for our whole community and if you'd like some good hot chocolate and have an hour of time on Sunday evening, please come to Sanford Park and enjoy the, the Community Tree Lighting. I want to thank everybody that helped with Veterans Day, that we did have inclement weather. We had to do most of the ceremony in here. We were able to lay the wreath outside at the Veterans Memorial, but I just appreciate everybody's patience. We had a great crowd. I appreciate Drew Lufkin for coming and speaking to us. Drew is now the current president of the Auburn Student Veterans Association and an Auburn US Army veteran and had a very poignant message for all of us and I appreciate his time that he took to be with us. And very excited about Christmas holidays as we get ready and the downtown holiday market is on, all the holiday fair is on Friday, the, the 1st of December, followed by the Loveliest Village Holiday Market on Saturday and followed by the Christmas Parade on Sunday. So big weekend. And certainly want to welcome and say happy Thanksgiving to everybody and hope your travels are safe and your times with your family are wonderful and, and that you're all blessed over the next few days with your family. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Mayor, if I may.
Please, Tom.
I'd just like, as we pause this week, to be thankful for all of our blessings from the good Lord. I want to be, see how thankful I am for Megan and all of our city employees who do such a great job and make this job easy. We sit up here and people think we're doing it, but you're the ones that actually do it, and our employees, that we have a great bunch of people and I appreciate them and on a personal note, I'm appreciative to the good Lord for my help and being back here tonight and missed last week, but, and I'm thankful for each one of you that worked, even me and Bob. I'm very thankful to have you all to work with and I can't, City of Auburn is just a special place and even when we lose the football game, we're still a special place. So, thank you to everybody.
Good to have you back, Chief. Glad you're doing well, man.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
As we speak, the Operation Iron Ruck, which is the Student Veterans Association's both of Auburn and Alabama, have started their, their march back to Jordan Hare Stadium. They'll be carrying those game football for Saturday's game along with them. That march is specifically to bring attention to our epidemic of veteran suicides throughout the nation. So if you happen to know a veteran who may be troubled, I encourage you to, to reach out to him and her and have them seek some help and see if we can do something to put a dent in this veteran suicide rate.
Thank you, Colonel. Appreciate that reminder. Anyone else?
I just want to remind the community of the senior citizens, homeless and disabled Thanksgiving dinner tomorrow at the Boykin Community Center. There will be free food and entertainment for our seniors and the public is invited to come out and it's at two, from 2:00 to 5:00 tomorrow at the Boykin Community Center.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Appreciate your hard work and leadership on that event. Anyone else? Okay. We will move ahead. I do not know if there's an Auburn University representative with us since it is a holiday week for them. I'm going to presume not because they're not coming forward. So we will move ahead with citizens' communications on items on tonight's agenda. This is only on the items on tonight's agenda that do not have a public hearing attached with those, but if you would like to address the City Council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead with City Manager's communications.
Mayor, our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, sir. Mr. Morton.
Thank you. Item 8, Charlie 2 and 8, Charlie 5.
Anyone else? 8C2 and 8C5. All right. We'll start with 8C2.
Item 8C2 authorizes the purchase of one 2024 Ford Edge from Long Lewis Ford of the Shoals for the police department in the amount of $38,368.50.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Morton.
This is, as I understand it, purchased with drug seizure money?
Correct.
Is that correct? I wonder if anybody could speak to how often the city gets drug seizure money and what amounts.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes, I'm happy to provide what information I can. The, the seizure money doesn't come in at a regular pace or at a regular amount. It depends on the cases that are worked and the way that the civil forfeiture works through the courts is very slow. It's, those funds are shared through the different agencies that are involved in the case, so there's really no way to say how often or how much comes in.
Is this it for the year or just the beginning of the year or?
So we, we, we try to spend out of that account as needed for those investigative purposes. I don't know that this would be the only expenditure this year. A lot of smaller expenditures occur throughout the year out of those funds as well.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
The good thing about seizure money is it has to be used for the, for the police division to enforce laws and it cannot, the city can't reach over and get it and spend it for a backhoe or something. Nothing against backhoes, I'm all for them, but.
You're making people nervous tonight. All right.
Just got to go back to the police department to be using. Our officers do a great job of seizing money like that. I was in on million dollar seizure one time, just, just to let you know, Sonny. But it, it really works for our department to have that extra money. If the chief gets in a bind and needs something, he can dip into that account and get it when he maybe not couldn't get it without it, so it's very.
Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8C5 authorizes the purchase of one 2025 International HV607 Dump Truck from Southland Transport Group for the Public Works Department in the amount of $132,572.41. Move for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Morton.
Yes, sir. I, I noticed that this was a 2025 vehicle and, and I know that's entirely possible to purchase a 2025 vehicle now, but I just wondered if this was a delayed purchase or is this something that's going to happen right away?
Mr. Ballard, our Public Works Director, can tell you what he knows.
I'm not aware of any delays just because it's a 2025 model. I can gather that information from our Fleet Services Division Manager, but I don't think that there are. He didn't indicate.
This is what was available on our contract by?
State contract.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was a 2025, but yeah.
Yep.
I Googled it and, and it looks like you can buy it now. It's kind of surprising, but that's what I figured. I just thought I'd ask.
And in today's market with vehicles, it wouldn't surprise me, but no, he did not indicate that there would be.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Ordinances.
Under ordinances, item 9A is a request from Walter Lee Barden Jr. to annex approximately 2.15 acres of property located at 47 Lee Road 716, also known as Lightfoot Court. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its November 9th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing none, any comments or questions? Okay. Lindsey?
Parsons.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Obleins.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
And.
Yes.
Item 9B is a request to amend the Madison Park Plan Development District to add approximately .83 acres of property to the Plan Development District and will replace 24,000 square feet of commercial and office space with 15 multifamily units on property located at Wire Road and Haley Lane. The Planning Commission failed to recommend approval of this request by a vote of four to four at its October 12th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary and a public hearing is required.
I'll need you, so ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Seeing one of the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record and you do have five minutes to speak. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Michael Musclewhite. Been here before.
Mayor, address, address, sorry, Michael. Address for the record.
Address.
Oh, 362 South Indian Road. I apologize.
Thank you.
This, this project is 15 two-story houses. That's it. I know some of the staff wanted a commercial there. We worked through extensively through the city staff and there's not a curb cut on our property on Wire Road and just the shape of the cutout of the property wasn't a great idea or great design for us to do that. So anyway, this is what we came up with. It's a great plan. We'll be coming off the access road, Haley Lane, so it's a really good ingress egress to get in there. We'll have houses around the perimeter and we'll have parking in the middle, but there'll be freestanding houses. And for everybody that was here last meeting, there was a huge, huge need for rentals in town. So we may sell these, we may be, some of these may be rentals, but there's a huge, huge need right now for that. And all we're doing, part of the, part of the property was in a PDD, part of it was not. So originally we came to remove the PDD from it and after talking through that, we decided to come back and just add the PD to it and there's nothing else left in the PDD. This is it. This is the last property in that PDD. But originally it was 79 acres in the PDD, all residential. Now it's, what they wanted was mixed use, some commercial, some residential. There is more commercial than residential actually now in it and it's down to like 13 acres. So we're the last 2.4 acres that's involved in that. So I hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving and hopefully you all support this. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council?
I have a few.
Please.
What is the plan for the eastern portion of this PDD? Looks to be undeveloped. Looks to be about, I'm just guessing here, about three or four acres, maybe more.
It's open space.
It's going to remain open?
Likely. I'll have Mr. Wahid Cotton address that, but it's likely required open space. Yeah, I'm getting nods. Yes. The far right-hand side in the aerial photo showing the master development plan. On the other side of the existing residential, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. It's required open space.
May I ask one more?
Please.
All right. I, I don't know exactly if there is a compromise position available or not, but I thought I would offer a couple, maybe one or two. It's, I think about 450 feet from the, from the curb or from the telephone poles to the back of the property that, that is in consideration tonight. The first 150 feet are possibly developable separately and it's possible that the last 300 feet plus the, the blue area on our, on our master development plan could be combined to, to do an abbreviated version of this project. I didn't know how you felt about a compromise on either side of the fence here, but I thought I would offer it to the city and I'd offer it to Mr. Musclewhite. I don't know if it has any merit for him, but if it fails tonight, I didn't know if that would be a palatable solution for him.
Not something that staff could speak to tonight, meaning recommendations have been made based on the plan presented.
Right. What is our position, where we sit right here with something, we got our, we've got something on the table that has been introduced and we're discussing it. What kind of changes can be made? I mean, can?
A little bit challenging to change. You can amend or put conditions on a PDD, but to, to fully redraw and change a plan would be, you know, highly unusual to stage. It would be more of a man situation or just saying, hey, you know, we need, we need more information if, if you collectively did. But otherwise, yeah, generally the plan before you is, is what's being requested and that's what we've evaluated.
I think, I think, I'm supporting it. I think it's a good plan. He, that, that's been vacant for some time now and we hadn't got anything commercial in there so far and there's a lot of houses going up out there on the Wire Road, Cox Road area and I think a lot of them are going to probably be game day rentals. I, I just think it's, fits what's going in out there now and I, I don't have a problem with it. I think there's other areas, further down, it would be better for commercial anyway with the new development at intersection of Wire and Cox. I think that's going to be commercial right there and I, I just feel like it's, it's been there for, back in so long, I think it's time that it's time to do something with it.
Any comments or questions related to the topic at hand or what Mr. Morton proposed?
I've got one question about.
Sure, Bob. Get right to you, Kelly. Go ahead, Bob.
The applicant was speaking about the curb cut or the lack thereof on that remaining There's, there's no reason why, should that, the frontage side of that, there's no reason why people couldn't access that if it was designed such that they could access it from Haley. Is it Haley Lane there?
Correct. And it is accessed from there. That'd be the preference.
Okay.
Try, we try to limit the number of curb cuts on our major arterials, especially by speed due to potential farrier and collisions and requirements for turn lanes and all of the above. That would be the preference.
Thank you.
Mr. Griswold?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It notes that the project proposes 15 new residential units that have five bedrooms each. How will these be configured? Are they five bedroom, five bath, the ADDU configuration?
I'll have to ask the staff if that, if that was.
What's the configuration?
That evaluated by the staff?
I don't believe we've been provided with floor plans for these.
Yeah, we do not know yet. And it's not in terms of academic dwelling units versus not and what have you. I mean, certain criterias have to be met, but from there in terms of the Plan Development District, it's approving whether or not those can be a multi-unit development. We also do not look at whether or not it's not our, under staff's purview, how they are rented. Sometimes you guys ask, are they rented by the bedroom or by the unit? And I know that came up in our last meeting and I think it's good information, but there is no legal control the city has over that.
Is it possible for the applicant to address that, whether it's going to be rented by the, by the room or by the, I think, he mentioned that there's a shortage of rental properties. Is there a shortage of rental market rate properties or is there a shortage of student properties?
If you want to ask applicant questions, that's within the council's purview.
Mr. Musclewhite, would you be willing to come forward and answer that question?
It really depends on our financing, to be honest, because we may end up selling these, but there's a need for both. There's a need for students and game day and everything. Like, there's a very tight rental market is what the study last, at the last meeting said. But we're not going to do individual bedrooms. We're going to do units, rentals or sales.
All right. Five bedroom, five bath or five bedroom?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. We're trying to design them for all the markets like game day and all that. That's like our, because this is two miles from the stadium. So that's, that's, we're trying to do like landscaping with Auburn Tumors Oaks, the descendants of the Oaks and some of Coach Dyes Maples and we're trying to give it the whole Auburn theme.
Thank you.
Before you leave, did you notice that there was a piece of property for sale right behind Gray's Auto and you decided that would not fulfill your needs?
It's my understanding that that, there's either under contract or something's happening with that, but I did, I did contact them about that and it wasn't available.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Any comments or questions?
Just one more comment. The overwhelming use of the property on that side of the road is residential. which is not in the PDD, but every, I think there's six or, and this would be the seventh residential development and two businesses. And I don't know if that's a negative or a positive. I just point that out. Could be that we want more commercial. As far as whether it's suitable for that, it obviously is suitable for residential.
Any comments or questions?
I agree with Chief Dawson. I, I think the time, and I agree with the staff, the time is going to come where that area out there is going to need some commercial. I mean, it's happening quickly, right before our eyes. And, but I'm supportive of this tonight. I believe Mr. Musso White has worked with his PDD and for the property he has left, it's the best use of his plan to support it. But I do hope that we're considering some commercial out there in the real, in the near future. There's a lot of rooftops that are coming in the next year or two.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, Lindsay with the roll call.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Hoblins?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Rizwal?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Sanders?
Yes.
Item 9C authorizes severe weather preparedness sales tax holiday that exempts specified items from city sales tax Friday, February 23rd, 2024 through Sunday, February 25th. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll need you to sort this and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion in second, seeing one on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening. Seeing or hearing none, any comments or questions? Okay, Lindsay.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Hoblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Rizwal?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Under resolutions this evening, item 10A1 is a request for conditional use approval of an institutional use of private school on property located at 2200 Hamilton Road in the limited development district with conservation overlay district. The project is known as ACC Academy. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its November 9th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion in second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record and you have five minutes.
Brett Basquin with the Forsyth Group representing the applicant. Just be happy to answer any questions if the council has any.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Basquin. Public hearing's open. Anyone else who'd like to address the council? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
I do want to notate that in this, the maximum enrollment of 100 total students is a, is a planning condition of approval, and so I certainly support that. And I think that's appropriate for the site and where they're, and what they're doing there. I know it's K through two to start with. There is an opportunity, I believe, for them to expand to K through four. But from what I've understood, if it gets beyond that 100 student limit, then, you know, other sites will be looked for and, and, and that. So I want to make sure that that's noted, that there's a maximum enrollment of 100 students.
Okay, on this site?
On this site, yes, sir.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A2 is a request for conditional use approval of a commercial support use of warehouse distribution for property located at 177 Technology Parkway. The project is known as Sonic Tools. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of it at its November 9th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, have a motion in second. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A3 is a request for conditional use approval for a mixed use and performance residential development that will include a road service use, which is a bank with drive-through, multiple unit development of 26 units and a 5,000 square foot commercial building on property located at 2240 East University Drive. This project is also known as the Vintage Expansion. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its November 9th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion in second. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes. No one will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
This will allow for, part of this expansion will give access off of the side street, which I believe is a private drive?
It's correct. It is a private drive. Mr. Wood, that is correct.
And so it will also then create an outlet for the current vintage phase, right? Will there be an additional?
Yeah, there are plans for it to have the ability to tie in and there will eventually be a traffic signal there relative to this, something we'll work on in the development agreement. While it's not germane to your decision point tonight, I will be back to you for funding participation relative to that because there are conditions that are not caused by this development that exists. This is at Stoker Street, East University Drive, where we have fire station number four. And there's a great need for preemption, which allows our fire trucks to adjust the traffic signal to get out. We do have admittedly a large number of accidents at, at this intersection, not with our fire trucks, but, so the development group has worked diligently with us for some time trying to get this done. And the first version of the vintage, also the original version tried to make this tie-in and that was not able to happen and now it is. And so we're very supportive of them proceeding with everybody using, it used to be called West Shore Landing, is it called the landings now? Apartment complex that's back there. There's, there's been a, a deal struck with the ownership group of that and this will make a better situation for everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we still plan to, to make a, an outlet to the east in front of Brewster's?
An outlet? What do you mean?
Well, there's a stub out there in front of Brewster's.
Mr. Wood? Can you get on the microphone, Brian? Just, yep.
Okay. The parcel to the west of Brewster's?
Yes.
We haven't seen plans on that yet, but there's supposed to be a doctor's office to come in on that parcel.
Styles, yes.
Right.
Okay.
One of the things, I think to your point, Councilman Mormon, is we require cross-access where, where it, from a grade standpoint, sometimes it doesn't work. And so I don't know in this vicinity because it's a little bit hilly if that will work. Mr. Wood, I don't know if you think-
Yet to connect to the piece that we're talking about is the vintage, there's a large wetland in between Styles' parcel and this parcel.
With this parcel, though, be able to get through Brewster's and the gas station on over to Gatewood?
Right, the way that is configured now, the doctor's office will be able to go to Brewster's and out to that signal and the vintage can go up to the new signal that's going to be at Stoker. So they'll both have access to get out at a signal.
The parcel that's, that you're referring to will have access to Gatewood in the long run.
It mentioned in the staff comment here on page three of five that there was, there was an attempt to make an agreement to the east as well as to the west. And I was just wondering if that was going to happen and if there are any challenges in securing either one of those. It's the first paragraph under staff comment.
Yeah, I think planning put a, a comment in there about looking at a possible connection to the east from this vintage parcel. And, you know, they're going to look at that and to see the feasibility, can they get across this wetland? There's a pretty, pretty big creek right there that would have to cross to get to there.
Yeah, the cross-access and connectivity is a standard comment we would make if it is not feasible for environmental reasons. You know, they can't make it happen and they won't be required to do so.
Yep.
Scott?
I was just going to add, and that is a comment, not a condition.
Correct.
Correct.
The first phase of the vintage is a classy-looking building. I think it's very dignified in our community and I'm encouraged that this could be an additional asset to Auburn, so I appreciate the investment.
Excuse me, sorry.
Yes, sir.
This was actually approved on 19 April 2022 and it expired.
For a different, so for a performance residential development. Go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
Yeah, so that was when the first multifamily residential was approved, just the first phase of it.
Any other questions, comments? All right, good. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B1 authorizes a one-year extension of an existing tax abatement for GE Aerospace located at 2400 Innovation Drive in Auburn Technology Park West.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B2 authorizes a one-year extension of an existing tax abatement for IPEX USA Manufacturing located at 239 Technology Parkway and Auburn Technology Park South.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10C concurs that the actions of the Industrial Development Board to secure financing to construct the advanced manufacturing training center to be located at 1470 Pumpfree Avenue in Auburn, in the Auburn Industrial Park.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any comments or questions?
Just clarification. This is a $3 million grant to be, to have added to that IDB resources of $1 million and then up to $1 million from the Auburn Bank. It's totaled to a $5 million project.
Correct. And we've already done all the sub-recipient grant funds. The city is, received the grant and the Industrial Development Board is the sub-recipient of the grant. And this is also partnership with Southern Union, Auburn University and others, why we are, the industrial board is spending the money along with the grant to do this. There'll be region-wide use of this facility.
Anything else? Any questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I may pronounce this name wrong, but item 10D authorizes the purchase of one Timco, Timco Model 600 street sweeper from Timco Incorporated for Public Works in the amount of $311,335.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion in second. Any comments or questions?
Just, I'm sure a lot of people would like to know how many street sweepers we own.
Mr. Ballard?
We own three currently, the regenerative, regenerative air street sweepers comparable to this one.
And they do the whole city?
We do. So we average every road within the city, our target is every 30 days. Each sweeper can do about 20 miles a day. We operate two daily, so 40 miles. If we went consecutively, it'd take about 20 days to do the whole city.
And this is the season where constituents expect it more often. And what we need to be clear on is please don't put your leaves in the street that go into the storm drains so the street sweeper can get them. We'd prefer you bag them in the brown bag so Environmental Services can pick them up because they do clog our storm drains and then we have other issues.
Or leave them for natural mulch, which is what they're intended for.
That works very, very nicely as well, if that's your question.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have on the agenda this evening.
Okay. Now, the opportunity for citizens, open forum, this is your opportunity to speak to the council about anything on your mind. You will ask that you give us your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes to speak to the council. Please address your comments to the city council and, and please do not name staff members. Yes, sir.
Robert Wilkins, 261 Denton Drive. Happy Thanksgiving, Mayor and Council. Today, let's all increase our humanitarian approach and less monetary and bureaucratic approach. Each of you were brought in this world by your mother. I last saw my mother in Germany a week from my sixth birthday day on August 13th, 1962. I'm still looking for her, but had a wonderful adoption, adopted mother that provided all the love any mother could and more. Megan, I know that you probably have an extraordinary definition of your mother and also Councilwoman Witten, Councilman Adams, Councilman Mormon and the rest of you. What I'm here to talk about today is about an 84-year-old mother, grandmother and great-grandmother that lives in Councilman Kolb's Warden, Ward 7. Her name is Corinne Woodson. Corinne has lived in her same home for nearly 60 years with her husband that passed away last year. This year, she's caught up in some legal mumbo jumbo that is unfortunately legally correct. On the surface, it looks as though Corinne Woodson was taken advantage of by her family and the Cleveland brothers, but this might not be true. But image can become reality. Quote from Corinne Woodson interview on WTVM Columbus, she said, "I would like to ask them why." Quote, "You know why, but I don't. I can't figure it out. Thinking about it, wondering about it, it's not easy. I can tell you that." Unquote. I may, I am asking Mayor to help the family's generational closeness to the Cleveland family to help in this situation. The Auburn City Council can use their development approval power if needed. Please open your hearts in working something out to let Corinne, 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 sorry, stay in her home. Maybe the Cleveland brothers could let Corinne keep two acres of the 40 acres that surrounds her house in some kind of life survivorship agreement. Everyone should Google this article, 84-year-old Auburn woman faced to sell home. Here's a list of some of the sources that have carried this interview. WSFA, WBRC, The New York Post, MSN, Black Enterprises, AL.com, Mira.uk and nearly 50 other agencies. Keeping Corinne in her home would be a good moral, ethical way to show the love that Auburn has for its neighbors and friends. What an image that would resonate throughout the city, county, state, country and world. Please help Corinne, Corinne, sorry.
Who'll be next?
Mayor Anders, ladies and gentlemen, the council, her Walter DeMar Jr., 412 Opelac Road, apartment 111. Forgive me for the way I look. I spent most of the day, looks like a lot of people at home. Didn't get past Byron's until tonight. Sort of adventurous, but I would like to take a moment to thank you all for encouraging us to do that survey about, you know, about how big we think Auburn should be. And the reason I mention that is because several citizens over the years have complained, maybe with some justification, that they're not getting input as to the city affairs. So I would like to let you know that you are giving us the opportunity to do that through that survey. And I would like to thank you all for that. And happy Thanksgiving and Mrs. Taylor, I'll try to be at the dinner tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, kid.
You're speaking of the Branding survey, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Sure. Who'll be next?
Hello, Martha Shant, 307 Camellia Drive. Thanksgiving. I am thankful for good people who hold fast to Christ's values. That's what makes this country so great. Thank you Hannah Ree, Silver in Prattville. She has started Cleanup Alabama. Check out her website. She's trying to fight the evil books in the Prattville Public Library. I thank Governor Kay Ivey for putting the Alabama Public Library Services feet to the fire, feet to the fire when she learned of the filthy, degrading and toxic books they allowed in our libraries. Governor Ivey has forced the APLS to cut ties with the Despicable American Library Association, which is run by a lesbian Marxist. I thank you great and good John Wall. You're a lion of righteousness. John Wall is also on the APLS, but he remains a champion for decency. John Wall fights the sexualization of children. He rejects the smut and the books placed on library shelves by morally revolting library directors. Thank you Speaker of the House, Nathaniel Ledbetter, for suggesting the legislature intervene to stop the flood of sexually perverse books. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter, for your courage. Thank you House Majority Leader Scott Stott Hagan for locking shields with decent Alabamians to protect kids from inappropriate books that lie to kids about gender and seek to normalize unnatural vice. Thank you, Mr. Stott Hagan. Your integrity makes you great and a hero for such a time as this. Thank you State Representative Rick Ream, who is now aware of the filth down in the Dothan Library. Ream is stating that he will work with his colleagues in the legislature to find a legislative fix to the obscene books, working in 2024 to remove the exemption that shields the libraries from Alabama obscenity law. Thank you, Mr. Ream. You're a lion of integrity. Thank you Eunice Smith and Becky Garretson of Eagle Forum, bold in the fight for what is right. Thank you Karen Van Wick of Mass Resistance, along with Brian Kaminker and Arthur Shaper for successfully defeating the degeneracy of the left. Thank you to all heroic public officials in our state who have not betrayed our trust.
Who'll be next? Okay, this time we'll close citizens' comments. Ms. Crouch, the first topic that was brought forward about the potential development on Hamilton Road, there has been no official, there's been no interaction with the city at this point in time on any development out there.
No development applications have been submitted. And when development applications are submitted, pure control of the property has to be demonstrated. Ownership interests have to be divulged and so on and have to meet all of our criteria. This property, though, is zoned currently for development in the Comprehensive Development District and it can be developed when ownership is resolved. And it can be developed in a manner of which it will not come before the city council unless it invokes a conditional use or it invokes a planned development district, some sort of zoning. Otherwise, it can be subdivided and go through planning commission by state law.
All right, anybody else?
I got a question.
Please.
The survey, is that, what is the deadline?